Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education's regular meeting of August 16th. We have the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Ruth, then we have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mrs. Cathers?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Mrs. Mulder?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Please silence your personal electronic devices during the meeting. And I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written with the addition of the addendum on the certificated staff item A1D. And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I would like to invite Marty Rothie up from OSBA. She is the Northwest Regional Manager. And Mr. Chris Whitman, who's the current Northwest Region President. They are going to come forward on behalf of an award or actually a couple of awards for Mrs. Mulder, who we're very proud of. And they have reached out to us a little bit ago and asked if they could attend our meeting and present you with your awards that you were not able to maybe get at a previous meeting. So come on up. There's a microphone right over here if you'd be willing so we can hear it. We're recording this and we want to make sure we hear everything. If that's all right?
Very good and thank you. It is a pleasure and an honor to be here to recognize, in my case, one of our own for great service. So we appreciated the opportunity to work with you as president and we do have some things for you. So with that, Carol Anne's awards that she was unable to receive during the March Northwest Regional Conference. We'll start with the S and the T of the Star Award. It is now my pleasure to recognize Carol Anne Mulder as a Regional Star Award recipient. This is a four-part award series that honors the work of school board members. The S is for stars. T for training, A for aptitude, and R is for recognition. Any board member that receives all four of these awards during a three-year period becomes a master board member. The Service Award recognizes individuals serving on a local school board, district, region, and state leadership, including service on OSBA committees and local board offices and committees. The Training Award recognizes individuals who have participated in professional development, events and activities delivered by OSBA or the National School Boards Association, the NSBA, or our new organization COSBA, which is the consortium of state school board associations. So again, you are receiving the S and the T at this point in time. Also, we want to thank you, Carol Anne, for your exerted leadership of the Northwest Region of OSBA during the most challenging of times. Your skill and willingness to adapt to last-minute changes as well as a new regional manager within a context of calm leadership was greatly appreciated. Tonight, we'd like to honor your service with a specially-designed box commemorating your time as president. Thank you, Carol Anne, for all you've done for the Northwest Region and OSBA. So congratulations and thank you.
This all would not have been possible to happen if it wouldn't have been for people like you and Marty. To be part of the team, it takes teamwork.
So a couple of certificates again?
Thank you.
The program because I'm sure you listed on the program. The display box and of course?
Oh, and a new pin. Thank you.
And the pin to what? Is that what it says on it?
It says Carol Anne Mulder, Northwest Region, past president.
Thank you.
And we were very fortunate to have you lead us during your term.
Thank you. Capital conference, I get to wear the new pin, right?
Absolutely.
Marty, did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Carol Anne, for your help and support and your phone calls.
Thank you. Thank both of you for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, Marty, yes, both of you, thank you so much for coming up and recognizing what we know as a, you know, pretty fantastic board member and everything you said is absolutely true. And I know because, you know, she's been... How many years have you been involved with the OSBA leadership? I mean, it's been a long time.
I want to say probably...
Twelve?
Ten.
Ten.
I think from the very beginning.
Yeah, from the time you've been on the board, you've been involved. So anyways, we're proud of her as you are, so thank you very much.
That's very nice. She's very deserving.
Thank you.
Send me the picture.
Yes, we will. Absolutely. I've got your contact info.
Thank you for coming. I know you both can use this. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and please don't feel like you have to stay. We talked about that before. You've got a little bit of a drive, I think, to the Finley, so have a safe drive back.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Yep.
I publicly participation at board meetings, I don't give any credit. Okay, please be advised that this meeting is being audiodated and will be uploaded on the district website. And we will move to item seven, the descriptions report, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulder. Brief, I think the highlight is we're getting everybody back to school. So just a couple of brief comments on the True Cash Report, our normal report. I just wanted to point out a couple of highlights. The other operating value that looks like it jumped so much is due to the first five years of the natural gas payments were for $745,000 roughly. It jumped up for the next five years for $1,080,000. So that's the increase right there, just so you know. And then advances in, it looks like I had a huge decrease. And that's as the return of advances were not posted until August. So it's a time difference and that'll clear up next month then. So apologize for that one. The fringe benefits on the expense side are a little bit high because this month we had to pay two insurance bills because we never got the June bill to pay. So that kind of messed with my year end, which I talked about. But I just want you aware of it that we do not have a 55% increase. It's just a tiny differential. On the town center, I had not heard back from legal. Obviously, it's not on this agenda. And she, I got a email from her, had not heard back from their legal. So it's kind of been a holding pattern. We'll keep you updated, but that's all I know right now. It's kind of nothing. And then I just listed a couple of items to, you know, where we're at this year moving forward in our offices. And then I have a very minor, the very minor transfer of $365,000 from '18 to '01 is due to there was a... One of the buildings had a bad account number and it crossed over to year end. And so I have to do a transfer rather than just change the account number. So very minor stuff, but I just wanted to let you know what that was. So unless there are questions, that's my report tonight. And very brief.
May I have a motion to accept the treasures report?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
The natural gas payment change is for my reference. It's the $1,080 for the next five years. And then after that, then it goes up to shoot, I think, 2.5 or something. I thought it was over the... Yeah, over the course, we're giving $15 million.
And what is the course of the term?
Um, fifteen years.
So there will be only one more adjustment in rate?
Yes, we have 10 more years of payments.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
And was the June bill issue just whoopsie on the side of the?
That was the insurance company's problem. They, it was Anthem and we didn't change and they had a smartest change. And I kept calling and I called and I called the broker. And then he, the guy he usually talks to is on vacation. It was just one of those, I was furious, but I... I'm not going to pay the way I did. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Item eight is the executive session. Does anyone have a need for an executive session? Okay, hearing none, we move to item nine, the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda. May I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. We need a resolution to approve school bus stops for the 2022-23 school year. May I have a motion to accept those, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have a question? About approving these, Dean, I know you would have the answer to this. If there were any adjustments like we had to make, we could say we don't have to approve those adjustments. They just get made by transportation and they need documents, right?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if an issue with a bus staff comes up for some reason, either a new development or just something, what is the proper procedure for community members to communicate with the district about a challenge regarding a bus staff?
Yep. First call is going to go to Josh Shannon, who's the transportation supervisor. If there's any appeal to that, it comes to me. We take a look at it. Any further appeal goes to Al. And then together we all look this at as well.
endless. Thank you.
And I just want to add, I mean, it is every year, every year at this time, there are challenges to bus stops based on a number of factors that change or that we didn't anticipate or whatever, right? A new house is being built, people move in and out. And also sometimes there's the expectation of door-to-door that changes when a student goes to another like level, that we don't have door-to-door bus stops. And it's not uncommon to have concerns, questions. And actually, we worked through several this week. It's happened every year I've been a superintendent, many years I've been assistant soup. And I don't recall ever really a time where someone's had to get to the board level that we haven't worked it out. And, you know, we try to maintain consistency because if we open up the floodgates to every change anybody wants, we'll never have any routes that are ever consistent. There are legitimate reasons to change. And I do want to thank Dean and Josh and all the board members. I mean, you guys just fielded calls and you fielded calls this week. We all know you fielded calls and we appreciate you letting us try to work through that. And you all did. And I think we've come to pretty much resolution on the ones we're aware of so far or that I'm aware of so far. So anyways, thank you all.
And Dean, I think it's important that everyone knows that the first process is starting with our transportation director and then working up. I mean, that's the easiest way to get the problem solved quickly, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Questions? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Item B under new business, this is the motion to enter transportation contracts. We have the Anderson family, Rice, Kopp, Webb, Lemon, Pastor, Shields, Lippert, and Slutpin to go to the Toledo School for the Arts and Hoffman and Mizell to go to Toledo Christian. This is according to law, we must provide transportation. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Item C under new business is the disposal of materials. We have 43 books and a Thompson grinder from the high school. May I have a motion to dispose of these things?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Item D is the bus bid resolution. Whereas the Oregon Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of three 71-passenger conventional-type school buses, therefore be a result that the Oregon Board of Education wishes to participate in the authorized meta-solutions to advertise and receive bids on the said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of three 71-passenger conventional school buses. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Sorry.
Oh, second.
Discussion?
Why am I recalling a similar motion recently? Is this in addition to? Yeah. No, it's the same three buses. We just have to do two things.
So one allows us to get into the meta-program itself. And then the other one actually allows us to go out and purchase them. So this happens twice per year.
So this one tonight is simply allowing us to be a part of that meta?
Yes.
Group? Versus buying the buses, you'll have another motion down the road probably on the actual bid purchase of buses.
But we did one?
For buses, right? I don't know when that was, what month that was.
It was early.
Yeah.
Spring. It's the most spring generally.
It's like every spring and every fall.
Right. And then we actually purchased them in July.
And did we do the same one twice? Is that what you're thinking?
It didn't hit me till right now. I apologize for putting everyone on the spot. I had deja vu. I had deja vu.
I will double check on it. There's no harm if we did, I guess.
We need three buses still.
Yeah.
You have my support.
It's budgeted in the PI levy.
Problem is getting them, Marty. We don't have them from the last time we approved them. How late are they now?
We're five buses behind. We ordered some last July. They're supposed to be this coming January.
Is this a supply chain thing?
Yes.
My concern is we have some grant money that has to be spent by a certain time to help pay for some of these buses. So hopefully, we actually get a check pretty soon so I can get the grant money. So we don't pay for them until we receive them? Oh, of course not. No, no, no. We receive them, we pay for them so that I have to send the invoice in before I can get that grant money. But you're right, we do it twice. There's a bus at that block. Exactly.
It's everything in transportation, I guess.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Item E, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the July 19 agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And moving on to item 11 is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulder. School for our staff and teachers began yesterday. I want to thank all four of you for coming yesterday morning. That means a lot to me and to our staff to see you there. I think it might have been the first time we've had that many folks at an opening day. It was nice. So I appreciate all of you showing up. I know you've got busy schedules and that means a lot. I thought the morning went pretty well. The rest of the day, teachers and staffs met with their principals. So it was a full day on that first day. So that kind of leads us into this week. And this week's one of those kind of non-traditional weeks. So I just want to make sure that more kind of understood this week. Beginning tomorrow, we have three kind of... We have three open houses along with other things that happen in the buildings at Clay, Ike, and Facet. So it's really 10:30 to 6:00 p.m. If any of you wanted to go to any of those three schools, they quote "are open" for families to come visit to where the schools do those type... Talk with teachers, do those types of things, along with, you know, they can pick up some things and there's some schedules and so forth. The elementaries, we're doing stuff a little bit different for a lot of good reasons, we think. We used to have traditional open houses. One of the problems with traditional open houses, like in the evening, was you'd only get a fraction of the kids that actually were able to come. And you'd only have a snippet of time to have any kind of meaningful conversation with families. And so there was a lot of discussion about, and it kind of a groundswell from staff, teachers, that they wanted to move to this, that's kind of what led us into this week without kids every day. They have individual meet-and-greet conferences with every family that's willing to participate in the elementary schools for the next three days. So I just wanted you to understand that one was what's going on at K4 level. And then our students actually begin Thursday and Friday with our kind of staggered start at Ike Facet and then the freshman orientation here on Friday at Clay. So if you were looking for the traditional elementary open house, you weren't going to find it anywhere because it doesn't exist and it's not happening. But that's why we do want contact and we are making contact with families in an individual about a half-hour conference. Any questions on that kind of first week? And then all kids will start up on next Monday, on the 22nd.
Have we done that for the elementary in the past?
No.
This is the first year.
We kind of dipped our toe through COVID because we kind of... We dipped our toe in it. And last year, we had a similar schedule and we tried it. So but the open house still existed last year. Now that kind of like, you know, this is just, we're going to see how it goes. You know, so far, we haven't heard a clamoring for, quote, "the traditional open house" because there's...
Seriously, I'm still missing their pizza night.
Yeah. That's true. I'm sure there's some...
I think an open house where everybody came and ate pizza for dinner. Those kinds of years.
Yeah. Traditions are, sometimes change. Mrs. Ruth already addressed the next one with the incentive agreement with the city. It's still in legal's hands and she's doing direct, working directly with all those folks. So I appreciate that. Just an update, Tom Keller and Mary Day. Tom is coming in next week, Wednesday. I think I mentioned this maybe at one of the last meetings. And he's going to work, we're going to set a date. We're going to work with our leadership team on the action plan building, the strategic plan. So I appreciate him coming into town. Mary actually has a house here in town, if you didn't know that. She's from Maryland and lived in Maryland for a long time and owns a house back here in Development. So she spends a lot of her time here in Oregon, which is wonderful. So we'll be connecting with them and continue to move forward. Just to give you a stat on where we're at with re-registering our children, I guess I'm really excited about this number. We're at 93% of our families have completed the process. So we want 100%. We never quite get there. We get to 99. whatever, five, you know? But we struggle with a few, but we continue to push and press. But, you know, there's a lot of reasons we want this information. But the basic reason is we need an updated information for anything that ever did happen related to safety. We do not let non-reregistered kids go on field trips and things like that because we don't have any updated information. And we put that in place several years ago now. It's been quite a long time. And that's really helped. So hopefully, we'll be close to that 100%. So thank you to all the families that did in our... Do we do as we speak? It takes a lot of pressure off us knowing that that high percentage is completed. I haven't had a chance to do this yet, so I want to do it tonight to publicly thank our custodians and our maintenance staff, all the contracting staff that have come in for all their hard work this summer and completing all the tasks or as many tasks as we can get done under this time because it never really stops. The summer stuff stops and now they, Dean's mentioned this before, and now they jump into just unbelievable amount of individual work orders that are just hitting them hard, I'm sure, this week as staff comes back. So they do it. They do it well. They do it without complaining, at least to me. Proud of all of them. There is never a shortage of work orders and projects to do. Again, you know, we need to just thank that group, as many of you have in the past. But I just wanted a chance to do that. So thank you. Big reminder to the community, and we're going to get more and more of this out there, is that the board voted a few months back that we're placing our renewal. Again, renewal, let me say that again, renewal, 2 mil permanent improvement levy on the ballot this November. It is not new funding. It has been on the books for 55 years. And then it passed, it'll be pushing that 60-year piece. So the main categories that permanent improvement funds go to are maintenance projects and supplies. And it has a very broad category that Mr. Sandwich kind of oversees. Academic curriculum materials, Mrs. Coy oversees that and classroom technology that Mrs. Chaboni kind of oversees. So those are the three core areas that money supports. So again, you'll hear more about that as we move closer to November. And finally, you know, as you know, football is starting like this week. And it's one week earlier because they moved football seasons up because of the added additional playoff game. So it feels like there shouldn't be a game this quick, but our first home game is against Monmouth this Friday. So it'll certainly come out and I'm sure it'll be a packed house. The weather looks decent. So I'm sure it's going to be a fun experience. And we'll do our best to get that stadium as ready as we can get it. And off we go. And that's my report. Questions on anything that might be on your mind?
And isn't the football a week earlier because they changed something in Columbus?
In the playoffs, yes.
Yeah, the week earlier, so...
Yep, they, yeah.
Takes a week off of everybody getting everything ready.
Yep, exactly.
Any other questions for Mr. Gregory? Okay, old business. The following policies were presented for their first meeting in July and are being recommended for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention on the support staff vacations and holidays. I think we looked at this one. It didn't look different than the existing policy. I think it was the addition of a holiday.
The Jutee.
Yes, that holiday was already there when I looked online and compared, so, okay.
So I'd have to go back in and look at what the changes, if there was a reference or a change from when it was before.
I couldn't find one and I felt like we chatted about this, but I'm...
Then we're, I guess, I guess...
We're replacing with the same.
We're just replacing the one with their... And we added a recommended change and we threw it, I guess, we must have seen something or thought we did.
If nothing else, it updates the date.
Yeah, the date of adoption, that's true.
So any...
No, you may be right on. I mean, we go through these and they're based... I mean, usually when we get them as an updated recommendation for OSB, there's something that changed, so...
All of the others were very clear what had changed and made sense, that one I recalled. And I looked, so I looked again and I still couldn't find it. So just, I just want to make sure we're not inadvertently missing another change. You know what I mean? Like if there's a similar policy and we just sort of...
We'll double check. Absolutely. And if something does change, we'll bring it back.
Because I know there's two different vacation and holiday policies ready for different pieces of the staff. So just maybe triple check that.
Correct.
Okay, anything further? Maybe have a roll call, please?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Moving to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Zvisky's not here. Do you have anything?
Mrs. Ruth covered everything and we discussed.
Okay, good. Thank you. Careful improvement?
We did meet. Kudos to Mr. Sandwich for putting together a list of all of the things he did. We discussed it, compliments as Mr. Gregory said. Our buildings look very, very good. There's a few things that we had glitches with and it mainly seems to be parts not getting delivered. Problem with contractors getting things done. I think we're really in good shape and thanks, Dean. Keep going. We'll be there in time, I'm sure.
Policy personnel, no policy to report. There's nothing new. And as far as we know, all of our positions are filled except a few assistant coaches?
Yeah, a few coaches and I mean, I think there's maybe a cafeteria person or two.
Oh, yes, some assistant coaches, yes.
But that's, I guess, more routine, you know, kind of throughout the year than staffing. But certainly, all our certificated staff are on board and look good the other day. And, you know, high energy. I feel real good about the year.
Okay, thank you. Economic?
We met last week. I think the most important thing that we discussed was summer school. So the most important takeaway from that discussion was during the summer learning program, 156 and a half credits were earned to aid in getting our children back on track toward graduation. And so that was really nice. And it was nice that we were able to also provide transportation to get the kiddos to and from their summer school. I talked to a couple of teachers yesterday morning at the kickoff that didn't participate in that. They thought that was the transportation component. It was a really nice thing to allow them to get back to the, to get back toward getting on track. We also discussed, um, comparisons as far as, uh, OST results for Oregon in comparison to other districts, uh, in the, in the region, uh, from third grade all the way to high school.
Okay, thank you. Legislative liaison.
No report at this time.
Student achievement liaison?
No report at this time. That will change very shortly though.
Okay, board discussion. Anybody have anything?
It's not board discussion, but, uh, we will, starting next month, have a student government representative every meeting for the rest of the year. So I just wanted to, I know I talked to Carol, I wasn't sure if I said that to the whole board or not. And we're, we're going to have representatives from the entire, like, all schools. So Clay, I think, is doing maybe the first and second. And then, uh, I don't know. We, we assign the schools over the course of the year. So that'll be nice. We'll get to here and see kids and, and see what we're all about, uh, for the rest of the meetings moving forward.
I would like to call attention for parents or anybody else who's interested in, on the website, there are three calendars now. Um, there's a sports calendar, which is all sports, a district calendar, which is sports and other things. And then there's a, um, very important assessment calendar. It tells us when the testing is for our kids, so you don't plan a vacation during those times. So, um, I think it's important that everybody knows that. September 3rd, the Landowners are going to put on a fall show. It's not a play, but a fall show. And September 8th is the holiday thing they put. That's what I have. Anybody else? Uh, executive social meeting, buddy?
I, I'm not going to recommend one for anything at this point. I, I will say, though, uh, we, we may, I mean, as things go, maybe a need for a special meeting at some point before the next month. So just don't have a date, don't even have a recommendation at this point, but, uh, you know, if that's needed, I just want to kind of put that in your mind.
Okay, we'll pass that. Um, announcement of special and regular monthly meetings. Like you said, no date for a special, but September 20th, I believe, is our next meeting.
Wow, September 20th.
September 20th. Anything else for the crew of the board? Okay, hey, I need a motion to close the meeting.
Summued. Second.
Any discussion? Other objection? Roll call?
Mr. Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it. A quick meeting.
So can I introduce you with those? I mean, Dean's got a bunch of.